With Jamie walking up here, let the record show, we have all board members present. And we will start, sorry, I'm kinda unprepared all of a sudden. We will start with the adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
I'd make a motion, we adopt the agenda with the supplementals.
Okay, I'll second.
A motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy, all in favor. Hi. Six, zero. Jamie, did you have a chance to look the bills over?
The bills and I'd make a motion.
Okay.
For the bills.
I second.
Motion by Jamie, second by Tammy, all in favor. Aye. Six, zero. Okay, we do not have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the STUCO reports. First up, we have Dodge City High School Student Council. Do we have anybody? Okay, we'll move on then to Comanche Middle School. Nobody? All right, what about Dodge City Middle School? Woohoo, look at you!
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I'm Xavier Hernandez here with an update from Dodge City Middle School Student Council. We've had some exciting news happening lately with the student council, and we wanted to give you all an update. First, our staff coffee shop, Trip and Sip, began smoothly on Friday, September 26th. We learned a lot of new things and found ways to make it even better. We will be trying out some new plans, and we really appreciate all the support we've gotten so far. We hope to host a chamber coffee event to highlight our school this year. Next, on Wednesday, October 1st, we attended the Student Council Regional Conference at the Civic Center. We learned about new ideas to engage students while at the STUCO conference. We also sold school T-shirts at the parent-teacher conferences last week, and even hosted a popcorn bar for our teachers on Thursday. We've been working hard to prepare our very first pep assembly. We have chosen the game, and we can't wait for everyone to join in on the fun and school spirit. We will be highlighting all fall sports participants at the assembly. Please come out to support both middle schools at the DCMS versus Comanche Middle School football game this Thursday, starting at 4:30 PM. And finally, our first school dance is coming up soon. We are super excited as we finish up decorations and plans to make it a fun night for everyone. Thank you for listening, and thank you for all your support. You make all these events possible.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hosting the chamber coffee, I think that's an incredible idea.
That is awesome, yeah.
That's great.
Any questions?
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we'll get the elementary report from Northwest. Do you have as big a fan club as Xavier?
I don't think so. It's been pretty hard to beat. Good evening, board, Mr. Scheck. Of course, a lot of things are happening across elementary buildings this month of October, and I can't believe that we're already looking at halfway through the month of October. So with that being said, we just finished up with parent-teacher conferences last week at the elementary level. Great turnout across the district. We've had pumpkin patch field trips across elementary buildings and grade-level teams as well. Bright Beginnings is looking at having Dr. Lucy Hart-Palson from EC Letters present to their staff here this month. We have professional development next week, or this week, I should say, sorry. This week, 16th and 17th, across the buildings where will be a variety of activities with radar forums and professional development, Alice training, et cetera. We have Red Ribbon Week coming up, the last week of October, for bullying prevention. Unity Day happens around October 22nd in the building. Just making sure buildings come together, everyone wears orange. We have our character trait responsibility that we're working on for the month of October, as well as safety talks from the fire station taking place in the buildings for K1, too. Halloween, October 31st, is on Friday, so that's a good thing. Is there any questions?
No, that is a good question, that is a good thing.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We're ready now for recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium at this time. All right, seeing no one move, we will move along. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for our September 22nd Board of Education meeting, and the 29th Special Board of Education meeting, approval of donation to Bright Beginnings from Donors Choose, approval of AFJ ROTC fundraisers, approval of donation to Comanche Middle School Drill Team with the attached list of donors, approval of revision to the Board of Education Screening Policy, approval of Facility Use Agreement with Venue Works United Wireless Arena to host Dodge City High School Wrestling Tournament, and approval of various donations to Dodge City High School with, again, the attached list of donations, of donors.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
My second. A motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy, all in favor.
Aye.
Six, zero. We're ready then for new business. First up is business services.
Good evening, board. I come to you with the Transportation Department prepared a bid specific for the five-passenger mid-size vehicle, and sent that request to bid to the local dealerships. The request for bid was also posted on the school district's website. US Fleet Source submitted the lowest bid of $29,400 for a 2026 Hyundai Sonata SEL. So I would ask that the board respectfully is requested to approve the purchase of the vehicle for Bright Beginnings, early childhood for the US Fleet Source, from US Fleet Source, in the amount of $29,400 to be paid from the grant awarded to Bright Beginnings via Russell Child Development Center. The Board of Education has further respectfully requested to authorize the board clerk to issue a purchase order to US Fleet Source and to sign any necessary paperwork required to complete the purchase of the vehicle, subject to the review by the board council. And on the second page behind that, it did show where all we did send this locally to get a bid. And I know there's been a question as to why we did not go with a local bidder per State Statute 721151. We are required to go with the lowest bidder if it is not within 1%. And this was at a 6.9% difference between the two. Any other questions?
Is the grant cover the cost, I mean?
Yes, they actually had $31,000 down to, in their budget within that grant, to cover the vehicle.
Okay.
Yep.
And it was slightly under that.
Yes, yes, it was a little bit under that. So we were worried about that, so.
Is this replacing or new?
It's new.
Okay.
Yep, this would be new in addition to.
I'll make a motion for approval. All right, we've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Ryan, all in favor. Aye. Six, zero.
Okay, thank you. As a part of the music curriculum adoption year, the elementary music departments are requesting that the general music district instrument supply resources be updated. Along with their web-based resources, while working with their current radar, they have identified the need for additional instruments for students to use. The newer models of xylophones offer a slimmer style that fits more easily in the classrooms and have legs instead of the large box. And so they are more handicap accessible and able to be used and stored more easily. This will help with students with physical limitations, such as those with wheelchairs or the balance issues, allowing them to place the instruments on their lap. So the board is respectfully requested to approve the purchase of 24 sets of three xylophones for the elementary music classrooms from West Music in the amount of $45,580.32 to be paid from the school district music curriculum instruments funds. The Board of Education has further respectfully requested to authorize the board clerk to issue a purchase order to West Music, and if applicable, sign a quote and/or contract, subject to board council. This was a, I had absolutely, I mean, I reviewed everything as it came in, but this was all taken care of by our elementary music teachers primarily. They did a great job of advocating for this, working with Dr. Springsteen's office to bring this to the business office. So I commend them for the efforts that they put into actually doing this. Questions?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Tracy and a second by Jeff, all in favor.
Aye.
Six, zero.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. All right, next up, we have human resources.
Okay, good evening, board members and Mr. Scheck. Tonight, the action item that I bring before you is respectfully requesting that we go ahead and modify the, let's see, it's a mouthful here, the sick leave payout upon retirement amount. In the past, to keep all class vacations of employees aligned, right now, our current policy has been that if an employee retires with us, whether they're administrative, classified, or certified, that we would pay out up to $75 per day towards that. And through negotiations this year with our certified staff, one of the adjustments that was made was an increase to that amount from $75 to $125. So to keep everyone in alignment, the request tonight, I'm respectfully asking that you approve the proposal of us increasing that amount from 75 to 125 for both the administrative staff and the classified staff as well. So in the financial considerations, it shows what the difference would be. So if someone had the max number of days accumulated with us, which would be 105, that they're allowed to accumulate sick days, if they were here for 30-plus years, the max payout would now be $13,125 versus $7,875. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jamie and a second by Ryan, all in favor. Aye. Six, zero.
We'll see how this goes. Maybe. Didn't think about an adapter.
Amy's got her Mary Poppins back.
Saves the day.
Is that you?
The real MVP. Hey. Thank you, Diana. Okay, so the second item I bring to you all tonight is a staffing update. And so we're just gonna be going through some information regarding what staffing looks like across our district. And as we go through this, if you guys have questions, feel free, I'd be happy to try and answer them along the way. If I don't know the answers to the questions, I'll jot them down, and I can provide additional information and we can review if needed. So this first slide just kinda gives an overview of what the makeup of USD 443 is. So 43 administrators, and there's the breakdown, 376 certified staff members, 849 classified staff, and of course, that includes our long-term subs and our daily subs. And then that comes to a total of 1,268 employees, and that does not include any of our extra-duty-only positions that we have. Our current vacancies, six bus driver vacancies, 12 coaches, six maintenance and custodial staff, five paras, and then 76 teacher vacancies, which technically, that just means that anybody that's a long-term sub, we technically have that certified vacancy in our district, even though it's being covered by a long-term sub. And then 36 at the secondary level, or alt-ed, and 40 at the elementary.
So if we weren't using long-term subs, and that's how many vacancies we would presently have, is 76?
Yep. So bus drivers up first, right now, we currently have 34. And we need at least one more regular bus driver and at least five additional sub-bus drivers at this time. It's really been a struggle for us lately. I will shout out to the transportation staff all day, because every individual in their office has a CDL. And many days, every individual besides one who has to stay in the office to help dispatch is on a bus. And so we're getting creative with some of our efforts to see if we can find individuals that have CDLs that are interested in joining us. We feel like our wage is competitive, and a lot of our drivers right now are either retired folks that have come back to help us and just do it on a part-time basis. So we're trying to find ways where we could incentivize that a little bit more for people to come in and be bus drivers for us. So we've gotten creative in the past, sometimes we have to split. If we have a maintenance position or a nursing position and they have a CDL, if they can help us drive before and after school, then they're doing that. So if you guys know of any CDL drivers, send us our way. The recruitment and retention ideas, some of these are things that we've already done or are doing, and some of them are things that we would like to implement, like the advertisements to start implementing at some of the gas stations that have the screens there, maybe some of the home games or in programs, and then yard signs, and then looking at some kind of SWACA partnership, if they have anybody in mind that might be interested in doing this as a post-career opportunity. But we do provide on-the-job training for this, that like the transportation crew is incredible. And so they're really trying as best they can. We had a career fair last week that we advertised this position at, and we're just trying everything that we can, so.
Tara, is that like five hours a day, or what's, if they just run a route?
It varies depending on which route. So some of them only drive in the mornings, and some of them only drive after school. But the average is between three and five, so.
Does the community college still have their CDL program?
They do, yeah.
Guys are working with them in some capacity?
Yeah, trying to. When anybody calls in, we give them the information on what it looks like for them to become certified, for them to get their CDL if they don't currently have one. And it can be kind of a process. I mean, with all the tests they have to take, and they have to get their endorsements with the school bus and passenger, but they do a great job of explaining it at transportation, it just can be a lot, so.
There were new regulations placed on that.
In a year ago, that increased the regulations on that? Mine's green, is it not?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next one would be for the certified staff. So then, we talk about teachers of record, and then according to KSDE, the teacher of record is a licensed educator who is responsible as a lead or co-educator for students' academic goals that are within a course. So right now, we have 376 certified teachers, words are hard today. 12 of those also include working after retirement, or we refer to them as our war teachers. We have great incentives for them to come back, between what the benefit that they're getting from CAPERS and the benefit that they get in the classroom, so we like to keep that pipeline open for sure. And then we have 73 long-term subs currently, which there's the breakdown. 20 of them have completed a program and are just needing to pass the praxis. 31 are currently working towards certification in a program. And then 18 are still trying to decide if they want to stay in the position and start a program, or if maybe this is not the route for them. And then for special circumstance, whether they're to the point in life where it wouldn't make sense for them to go back and get certified and those kinds of things. The average years of certified experience in our district is 11 and a half years, which I think is pretty good. And so we're just trying to find all the ways that we can to incentivize them to come to our community. Here's a little bit of information on our past retention rates. For 2425, we stayed about 85%, so that's pretty good. We had 30 teachers depart at the end of the year last year, and then here's a breakdown for some of the reasons as to why. Some of those in-state and out-of-state relocations, they don't always tell us where they're going or what they're doing, but for the ones we did get information from, the majority of them are relocations within the state, but I think we had five that were out of state. And we had some retirements, some health issues, and then there were some that left the profession, mainly due to staying at home with their children. And here is the KSDE's 2324 year in review, which kinda talks about the number of vacancies that they had. So all reported vacancies for the spring '24 and fall '24 was 1,954. I was hoping to be able to get the 2425 year in review for you guys, but they, I think, are discussing that at the state tomorrow and Wednesday. And then some of this hasn't been broken down by region yet. But when I get that information, I can send it out to you guys and we can review. But while I don't have that report, I did get some information on their fall vacancy data report for fall '25. And per their numbers, there's been a 21% decrease in the total number of certified vacancies that we've had across the state. And that equals 457 overall. And then, of course, SPED remains our highest area of need, followed by elementary ed, and then physical sciences after that. All three of these did see a decline, though, which is great. And then the two areas that did have minor increases were school counselors and early childhood. And then that information, I just told you guys, the state team is continuing to work on the breakdown of some of that regional and local information, and when I get that, I can pass it on.
Are you, in the school counselors, are they including social workers or just school counselors?
That's a good question. I have the report itself, let me write that down, Jeff, I think I might have that information.
I'm just curious, because I've talked to other school members across the state, and they talk about, and like, we have a social worker at the high school, and they're doing that in more schools, so. I was just curious.
And one thing that I could add to that is whether they're counted or not, eventually, it all gets counted somehow, because if that counselor we have working, or that social worker we have working as a counselor or in a counseling position shows up as a vacancy on that, on those vacancy numbers that she went through, because they would not be certified and highly qualified for that position according to KSDE guidelines, so.
Okay, potential reasons for the shortage, just less people are going into education overall is really the trend that we've seen. But other things that have been cited were post-COVID retirements spiked up, and then burnout, lack of support, and lower wages are some things that we have heard across the state. And then at this point, more students and fewer teachers, especially in the SPED arena. So those are some of the issues as to why people aren't going into education and/or are leaving the profession. So a couple of things we've got in the works as far as how we grow our own. One of the things that we have is the Kansas Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program, which just means that we have folks that are, might have been originally paras in our district that can apply to be a teacher apprentice, which means that they're in the classroom, working with a certified teacher who's qualified, and they're going through what it- And they're going through what it really is like to be a teacher, so they're getting in on the classroom management piece. They're going over the curriculum, they're meeting with parents at parent-teacher conferences. They're going through the professional development to really see what it's like to be a teacher, to determine if that's really what they want to do while they're in an education program, working towards becoming certified as well. Right now, our district has twenty slots that you all have approved and nineteen of those positions are filled at this time. We have five of those that are student teaching right now. And so the goal of the program is that they will complete their student teaching as an apprentice and then they will graduate the program, pass their praxis and then be in their own classroom as early as the next semester or the following year, depending on when they get done student teaching. And so we do have those positions that are open right now. And the position is actually open on frontline for any that might be interested in pursuing that position. So we'll have some new apprentices that will go into the program in January. They start out at a higher rate. And then each semester, as long as they prove that they're meeting the requirements of the program, they receive a two percent increase. And then they're also eligible for our full-time fringe benefits and everything that comes with that as well. They get the scholarship funds that come with that, so up to twenty-five hundred dollars per semester. And then there's some additional funding opportunities that they could qualify for as an apprentice as well through the state. And then they also could qualify for our new teacher tuition payment program as well if they still have outstanding balances once they get through those two scholarships.
And I believe about half of those individuals that are in that Kansas Registered Teacher Apprentice Program now graduated from our high school within the last two years. That's probably the most exciting thing from my perspective. As far as, for the first time, we now have new certified teachers coming out that don't already have their own classroom. We've been filling the gap with long-term subs for so long in our district that even when they become certified, it really didn't do anything other than change them from a long-term sub to a certified teacher. From that perspective, they already had a classroom. Now we have twenty individuals working under some of our best veteran teachers for three to four years at a time and then graduating and needing a place to go in our district. And so for the first time, as these individuals start graduating out of their programs, they will be looking for a classroom. So hopefully as this continues to gain momentum in the next couple of years, we will see that that number of long-term subs declines and that overall number of vacancies begins to decline as well as we continue to have this program gain traction and grow.
And don't we get a commitment from them that they'll stay in the district for a little bit?
So many of them end up utilizing the tuition payment agreement, which has that built into the contract portion of that. From the perspective of just the Kansas Teacher Registered Apprentice Program, if they only utilize the funds within that program, then there's really nothing that we have put in place to say you have to stay with us because again, you see the numbers in the state. We are just trying to help build that population of teachers throughout our state for all of the students at that point within that program from the state and federal level.
There's a few other districts in Kansas that have the teacher apprentice program. It's becoming more all the time, but we have the second most in the state at twenty. I think the next district above us is in Topeka and I think they have twenty-one. And so as we get to the point where we run up that we have more candidates for the position than spots, then I may come to you all and request that we add more positions, which would be very exciting, of course, so.
And that's kind of that balance because we've talked and we've gotta make sure we're doing what we say we're doing and you hear me say that consistently. You've gotta be able to manage the program and oversee it and make sure that you have the time built in to go out and meet with those veteran teachers and those apprentices and have those team conversations and make sure you're setting the goals and meeting the goals and seeing that follow-through because the one thing we don't wanna set a precedent on is just because you're in the apprentice program, you automatically have a job in our district. That's not the point. And you are gonna have to show that you are capable of doing this even through going through that process. And that takes a tremendous amount of collaboration and oversight from Tara's office to be able to do. And so I wanna make sure that if we do come back and ask for more spots, that we are able to continue to do that in a meaningful manner.
The next part would be our new tuition, new teacher tuition payment program, which was what Jason was just touching on. So in order to qualify for that, you have to have a desire to obtain your teaching degree. These are mostly long-term subs and some paras that are interested in this, but then, well, mostly long-term subs. Because they have to complete a plan of study document showing the coursework that they're taking and then when they might potentially be taking their praxis, their areas of study. We also use those documents to where we have praxis prep throughout the year and we utilize those documents to see what the highest need is for those students who are still needed to pass their praxis. And then we have an instructor that comes in and the two highest needs, we bring those in. And they have the opportunity to get some of that praxis prep. And so they must be enrolled in an approved university program and then they are eligible to receive up to two thousand dollars per semester for up to four semesters from the district. And then it covers tuition fees, praxis, exam fees and the initial application fee for the teaching license. This next one, our teacher cadets. So at the high school, we have teacher cadets and this is a CTE pathway that is currently ran by Mrs. Erin Stevens. Shout out to her, she is an incredible educator and incredibly passionate about teaching and about her students. So she has grown the program in twenty-four, twenty-five, she had twenty-nine between the regular teacher cadet program and the advanced. And she's had, now she's at fifty-seven, so that's a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase in the regular teacher cadets. And then she's added three more to her advanced teacher cadets. So very proud of her for that. These students have the opportunity to come in and work with teachers as well and be in the classroom, get some of that work-based learning. And then they also get the opportunity to take part in some of the other things that Erin's doing, where she takes kids up to the state and they get to see how some of the programs are ran and be a part of some leadership opportunities that they have. Erin and her students started an educators' rising chapter here at DCHS this year. It just means that her students get to go and attend regional events and which is just additional opportunities for leadership and development.
What's the difference between teacher cadet and advanced teacher cadet?
So I think it's just the, it's just the types of things that they get to do and the things that they're exposed to. So they get to learn about different things and then when you get into the advanced, that's when they get to go out into the workforce and be in the schools with the students and get to experience that piece.
You know, one thing before we get out, you know, I just wanna give a word of appreciation to our building administrators because I have tribal knowledge because my wife has been a mentoring teacher in several buildings in the last several years. And this puts, having the teachers, the mentors and getting these young people, these young teachers up to speed puts an enormous amount of pressure on the building administrator because they've gotta make, it's like Mr. Scheck said. He said, "Not everybody gets a job." And so they're dealing with not only the educational part, but somebody's future. And so I just wanna thank you all for the job you do in this program because without your, without your just blood and guts work, this wouldn't work. So thank you.
With our teacher cadets, once they graduate and go off to school, do we follow them? Are we in contact with them?
So.
Trying to recruit them back to the district?
With most of them, what they do, since they don't have the college credits and they haven't yet graduated to be able to work as true para-professionals in the classroom, they don't meet the requirements as per the state yet. So what we do while they're in school is we give them the opportunity to take our para assessment. And most of, the three that have taken it have passed with flying colors so far. And then they get to go into the workforce and work off of that. The goal for most of them is if they're gonna stay local or even if they're taking a program online, is that they become actual paras in the classroom with us and to get them into the teacher apprenticeship program.
And the other thing that we did about two years ago, now this will be our third year, we started participating in the National Educator Signing Day in the spring in which they sign a letter of intent with us that guarantees them when they have finished their program that we will give them a job interview. Not necessarily a job, but a job interview. And then we keep lists of those individuals that we have for the last two years. And yes, we do try to stay in contact with them. We use more newsletters and other things to just send out every once in a while to kinda keep that communication line open as they go through those programs. But as Tara said, many of them don't wanna leave here. We have two and two agreements, as they're called, with Dodge City Community College and the other major four-year universities in the state now where they can finish their two years here. Many of them start that in high school with concurrent classes now. But they have figured out how they can get these one hundred and twenty hours that they need and only do the sixty that they have to have at the community college and then be able to transfer and get the other sixty at the four-year university without all of the transfer issues that we used to see with transcripts and this class doesn't count for that and this class doesn't count for that. Over the last four years, the universities and the community colleges have really worked well together to try to solidify some of those things and be able to lay something out in front of a student and say, "Here's your path if you wanna take it," so.
How will the agreement with K-State work? Will it work like the one with Fort Hays and Newman?
Yeah, absolutely.
They just signed that agreement the last couple of weeks, haven't they?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
As Jason talked about, the signing day, I should have put a picture up here, but it's really quite an event to behold, just like any athlete when they sign. We have the universities come and their families get to come. And any educator that has influenced them to go into the educating field comes. And we tell a little bit about them, they have a picture opportunity, but they do that at the high school just like they do for some of the other career paths and the athletes, so it's really a cool experience. Something else that they've done with the cadets is Avery Welchel. She's received the U.S. Presidential Scholars in Career in Tech Ed Award. And so that's first-hand, outstanding achievement in her field. And so she's been a cadet and she's also co-teaching right now as well in elementary schools in our district. So very proud of her and as well as again, Ms. Erin Stevens for helping to make that happen. So doing a few things to try and recruit and retain. You've heard some people say that retention is the new recruitment and we've taken that to heart and we're trying to do whatever we can to make our district a great place to be. So we've got some awesome supports in place and we will hopefully continue to expand on some of those things, especially when it comes to praxis prep. We have a great PD program available as well as our awesome instructional coaches and our educator support program that we put them in so that they continue to receive that support through their careers. And our pay and benefits as well. So the twenty-four, twenty-five Kansas average salary and fringe was sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. USC 443 is a sixty-nine thousand, five fifty. So just doing everything we can to continue to be a place where people want to come. We also offer tuition reimbursement opportunities as well as we offer a stipend for anyone that has their ESOL endorsement and that's a thousand dollars per year. That single-value medical benefit is a huge benefit. It's an eighty-one, eight thousand, one hundred and nine value for the year and that's all paid by us. And then we have mentor stipends as well. And that's to help continue to entice some of those veteran teachers who are incredible at what they do to be mentors for others, but then also our teacher apprentices and so on, so we're still getting that back twofold. This is a compensation package document that we put together, which kind of just outlines all of the things that USC 443 has to offer. So we take this to recruitment events with us. It kind of outlines what the annual value could look like for an educator. We have the first year on there as well and we have a very competitive salary schedule when it comes to certified staff. So we wanted to outline all these things so where somebody could just take it if they came to a career fair and really take it home, look at it, ask questions if they had them, to really compare how Dodge City looks compared to other districts they might be concerned with. I wanted to include this for you guys. One of the things that we're doing is we do have some staff that are in a non-traditional licensure pathway, which just means that they might have bachelor's degrees or master's degrees in something else, but they're wanting to move towards becoming certified. And so there's, KSDE has actually put this together. It's an interactive kind of flow chart so that if they're not sure where to start, there's options for them. That piece that says "Still not sure" down at the bottom, they can click that survey and it'll walk them through the experience that they have, the education that they have, what their end goal is and kind of help them find a path on what they need to work towards certification in whatever area they're interested in. So it's great. You can see down there on the right, it has the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship. So as we work with some of those staff and try and get them to where they want to be and what their long-term goals are, we have this for them. The next one, this is for Pathways to the Classroom for anyone that might currently be working towards certified teachers or their certification and it has the different type of licensures down there. I know that sometimes it can be overwhelming when somebody comes in and they know what their end goal is, but they have no idea how to get there. So we're really appreciative that KSDE has come out with these tools to help and we take these with us and we showed them to our teacher cadets earlier this year so they could take the survey and get in and see what their options were. Our teacher apprentices have option, are access to it. So just another tool that the state has that we've been utilizing. For our long-term subs, we want to continue to incentivize them to be in our district while they're working towards certification. So we have done some adjustments for them, increased the daily, the teacher of record daily rate to two twenty-five. They're now eligible for some holiday leave that they weren't eligible for in the past. So we wanted to incentivize them to stay with us. We know it can be difficult when, if they come in before, when they came in as a long-term sub, they didn't have access to any holiday leave and some of these other benefits. So obviously the goal is for them to be certified. And so we wanted to give them some incentive to stay in the district and continue to work towards certification with us. We plan to, while we currently provide some praxis prep, the goal is to see what other options we might have that we can work with other entities and really customize the praxis prep as much as possible to help those individuals. Really everyone that still needs to take it, but especially those who have completed a program and just are needing that piece, so. Another thing that we do is the Kansas Teacher Retention Initiative. And so Dr. Brett Church from the Epic Center, they send out a certified retention survey. And so this has been sent out in our district where they can go in and provide information on what it's like for them here, still being a certified teacher, what are the pros, what are the cons? And then we get that information back after the survey closes. So this is open to other districts across the state and we are part of this program so we get this information back. So we can really see what's being said across the state. The only thing about it is that there are some drawbacks, you know, the subjectivity and bias piece of it. And then it might not always be a true depiction of what it's like specifically in our district overall. We do have one of these for classified staff as well, which I'll be sending out. That comes out October twenty-second, so we'll have one for classified staff as well to go through the same thing, see where the benefits are, the pros are, if we have some areas where we could find some improvement or things that we're doing well. So we'll continue to look at the data and see what it tells us.
And three years ago would have been the last time we did that. And I have brought that information from that survey. And the nice thing is, is even though we do get the information comparatively with other districts like us in the state, we also get the information specifically only for our district. And then in the past, what we have done is created a task force to get together and look at that data. The last time we did this, the data actually told a really good story for us in the district as far as what the engagement and retention aspects were amongst our certified staff. Even within the classified staff, the main thing was the compensation pieces. And so we have actually addressed those over the last two years with the compensation study that we did in the hourly wage realm. And I believe we're in a much better place as far as that goes with the longevity pieces and how that new scale has been stretched out to reward those people that have been with us longer. So it'll be very interesting to see how this turns out. I know the last time we had about a seventy-three percent participation rate, which is extremely high. They require at least a thirty percent participation rate even to consider the data valid. So hopefully we can have that type of participation again and really get some valid data that we can look into from the engagement perspective.
Next one that we're doing, we've talked about this a little bit, is the vacancies that we currently have, the teacher apprenticeship program. Still attempting to grow our own. We attend career fairs, we go to as many in Kansas as. We go to as many in Kansas as we can attend that have a education program. We have stretched into Oklahoma, and we hit a couple of fairs there as well. We've had some good luck with going down there. Kansas historically pays much better than Oklahoma does, so definitely down in the panhandle, we've done some recruitment as well. We have some teachers in our district currently who are from a couple of those Oklahoma universities now. We also are potentially, well, we are going to attempt to go to a job fair in Greeley, Colorado this year. We have a better salary schedule historically than they do in Colorado as well, so attempting to expand our resources and see what we can figure out in other states. Sign-on bonuses, we have sign-on bonuses here, as well as student teaching stipends, which not a lot of districts offer. So essentially, what that means is when a student is ready to student teach, they could come to our district and be paid to do that, when in some districts, they don't receive any compensation to come in and student teach. So a great benefit that's offered. So we have some opportunities that are up and coming. We've talked about the teacher apprentice program. One that the state is currently working on right now, they're in a pilot, is a Kansas Youth Apprentice Program, which means it starts with our students in high school. So for them, it would be any that are taking that dual credit. This would be funds that they could put directly towards that upfront. We know that some of the barriers from our students being able to take some of those dual-credit courses is, of course, funding. And so this piece, the district would supply the funds upfront for them to be able to take those courses, and then we're reimbursed by the state after that. So just another way to incentivize them to keep on getting their education, and while we're in a working group for that program right now, so we haven't started our own pilot, but we do intend to. The next piece is the apprenticeship right now that we're in. It is for any students that are working towards becoming certified teachers. There is also the teacher apprentice program for non-traditional students, so that would be for any of our students right now, or, sorry, our staff, that are working towards becoming certified that might have a bachelor's degree or a master's degree that's not in education, but they're working towards it. So we're working with the state in that to see how we can go about implementing that program as well. Just recently, the state awarded Ford County, I believe it's $211,000, but starting in January 2026, they're wanting to relocate 10 families to Dodge City, Kansas, but Dodge City, in 2026 and 2027, and they'll offer those families $5,000 towards their relocation expenses. And so that's definitely something that we're going to be utilizing when we go out to recruit, and so we'll for sure be using those when we go out to other states to incentivize some of those people to come to Dodge City. Some things that we would like to do that I have in my head, longevity recognition for some of our staff that have been here for a long time and do such an incredible job. I have some ideas on what that might look like, so those may be coming to you guys here in the next couple of months. Also recruitment incentives for staff for some of those hard-to-fill positions, if we have some kind of incentive that we can offer. Our staff are going out there and recruiting individuals, especially in positions that are hard to fill, so that we can reward our own for bringing in staff by their word-of-mouth and their connections. So. Any questions?
Thank you, though. Great report.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you, Tara.
Great information. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Scheck.
All right. Hard to believe that this has been going on for about 105 calendar days already. About 73 of those have been workdays, and as I shared with the board in my process of going through the interview and things with my 100-day plan, one of the things that I wanted to do was bring the district's strategic action plan back to the forefront. Laying in front of the board, you kind of have an idea of where that's headed. At this point, we are continuing to have some conversations at the cabinet level as to the best way to continue to roll this out. And my reasoning for putting this on here this evening is I believe I've reached the point where I want to make sure that I'm getting feedback from the board. I believe it's important that at this point, I have updated this to the point where it is current with all of the information that I have available to me with the goal areas and the specific goals in each one of those areas. And so I want to try to have a work session with the board in order to have you look deeper at this and really provide some feedback with what you see here. The long-term goal is to try to show how everything we do is aligned. In an organization of any kind, if there's not alignment, then you're going to lack consistency, you're going to lack trust, you're going to lack some coherence, you're going to lack a lot of things unless people all understand how we're all pulling together in the same direction. So on the front page of this will be the actual district strategic action plan, and then the goal for the backside, which would be a separate, these eventually will be, hopefully, poster-size documents that hang in this room, in all of our buildings, in the cabinet room upstairs, to keep us focused on why we're making the decisions we're making, which is why I believe it's time to have a little bit of feedback and input from the board in this process. But on the backside of this, it then has those goal areas from the district strategic action plan, but then it shows how those goal areas are also aligned to our KISA accreditation process and the goals within that accreditation process, and how we have to make sure that what we're doing from the strategic plan balances out with what we have to do within that accreditation process to be an accredited organization, which then filters into the building goals, which you can see there are Ross's building goals, and they're listed there, and they're hard to read because they're kind of small yet in this format. And then eventually, it filters down into the individual personnel goals. And I mentioned in week in review that over the last two weeks, I have met with every one of the cabinet members, and we have set goals that are aligned with all of these structures within our district, and we are actually going to post them in the cabinet room upstairs, and we are going to be accountability partners to each other to make sure that we are staying focused on those things that align from our personal level all the way up to the district's strategic plan. And again, we may have to modify and make some adjustments as we get feedback from the board and as we adjust our overall vision and focus, then we will make some slight modifications and refocus those goals along the way. So all that to say, I would like to schedule a work session, so expect to see an email from me requesting some time in the next couple of months where we can get together and really dig deeper into this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready now for Board of Education member district responsibilities. Parking rec, Ryan? Nothing? Okay, Bright Beginnings Head Start. We've already been advised by Tammy that it's going to be a long one, so.
Well, we've had two meetings. We had one after the last month's meeting and another one. And I love to brag about what we're doing with the early childhood, because they're doing a lot of things. So Bright Beginnings gets funded for 215 preschool spots, 57 early Head Start spots, 55 home visit spots, and Sunnyside has 80 slots for the pre-K or preschool students, and they're full. And basically, the programs are pretty much full, just waiting on students to go through the assessment to be in that. Plus, they have the Parents' Teachers Program and a daycare program. So, yeah, they're serving a lot of kids. And two key pieces that they do is assessment, a self-assessment, and then they also do a community assessment. The community says their grant, the expectations through the grant to be done, but it's also a key piece in being able to look at what they're doing well, see if the areas that they can grow in as a staff to meet the needs better with the kids, and then also just to see, ask the community, hey, what is it that you see that we need in this community? What are the strengths in this community to meet our kids' needs? And so for the self-assessment, they have a team of people that do this, and so they look at the areas of training, social-emotional readiness, or so which is enrollment, recruitment, selection, eligibility, and attendance, and then family partnerships, which is a key piece with them, communication, safety, and then, of course, staff mental health and wellness. And then Brenda, she sent out the community assessment last month, and we had 245 responses. And most of the families, there was nine different areas that they looked at, and most of the families reported healthcare access is having significant challenges and shortages, which we kind of know this, right? And housing, which is, there's more housing going up and housing opportunities, but not affordable for a lot of the families that Bright Beginnings works with. And then food security, so one in five families experience income limitations or eligibility barriers. And then another one is substance abuse. Nearly 80% were concerned about substance abuse in our community, and they really would like better education, prevention, and youth engagement activities to be going on within our communities. And then mental health, most families reported the services were somewhat accessible but not affordable. And then childcare, we know that that's a difficult area to have enough childcare for our community, but that's something trying to address. And then transportation, which is another major barrier, but another good thing about that is that Bright Beginnings has partnership with the public transportation and now going to have a stop that's nearby Bright Beginnings, so when public transportation will be there, which will help out quite a bit. And then they also have bus scholarships to help families that need help with that, to help kind of take care of some of the gaps. And then the other thing is community engagement. The families, you know, they enjoy the parks and the schools and the community events, and yet we would really, I think they would enjoy to have way more opportunities for families and things to do around here. And then finally is Bright Beginnings impact within the families that they, the comments were saying it was overwhelmingly valuable, Bright Beginnings for its nurturing environment, quality education, positive impact on children's social and emotional academic development. So kudos to them. And this is a piece that, this is what they use to really evaluate, how can we help our students? How can we enhance our programs? How can we enhance our community engagements and the things we do, so, and our partnerships? So, okay. And now we're down to class observations. So they've been busy little beavers getting into the classrooms and doing all the observations with that, and they have 95% of the screenings done, which is, thank, or not been in school for very long, so, which is a key thing. And then Bright Beginnings, which can you imagine with the three and four, the littles, okay, doing tornado drills? Yeah? So they've already done tornado drills and fire drills, plus Sunnyside has gone the extra mile already in evacuation drill. How did that go?
We're going to do it next week.
Oh, you're going to do it next week. I'll be interested to hear about that.
Have I lost anybody yet?
Yeah. And then Bright Beginnings is participating in the Pumplin Festival hosted by Victory Electric on 10/25 from 9 to 11 a.m., and Sunnyside is hosting a parent breakfast, and it's also a site council time on October 31st. So, and I really could have a whole nother page that I could talk about, but I decided to focus on the assessments.
Thank you, Tammy. Nice job, everyone. Not to be outdone, Jeff also has a lot to say on special ed.
Well, I just want to, there are some things, you know, obviously going on that we usually talk about it, but I want to talk, and I want to share my heart a little bit because special education is very near and dear to me. You heard of teacher recruitment, all of the things we're doing for teachers, the shortage, the long-term subs. In special ed, it is even more acute because of the training and the, just the education that you have to be a sped teacher. And most of you know this, we are part of 613. Everybody calls it a cooperative. It is not a cooperative. It is an interlocal. And the difference is, if it was a cooperative, Dodge City would be the biggest stakeholder, so they would basically run the cooperative. An interlocal is everyone has the same vote. So there are districts within the 14 that have less than 10 special ed students. We have 1,000. I have the same vote as their board member. That has led to some issues, and it could lead to greater issues in 443. It is, we are facing, we are in a budget crisis as we speak, and that's just, that's public knowledge. That's not, we have, I really appreciate, in the, we've had some very heated, long board meetings. I appreciate the support that Mr. Scheck has given me. I'm chairman of that board, and it has been, it's difficult to think as I've done, and I'm the oldest person in the room, I would imagine, but it has been difficult. But my concern, sitting in this seat right here, is 1,000 children in 443. The staff at 613, the administrators, they are peddling as hard as they can. They are, I really enjoy working with them. They are peddling. They're having to make some decisions maybe that are tougher simply because of funding issues. Not only do we have more special ed students, we have students with greater needs. And you can have, I mean, the needs are growing exponentially as far as the services required, even the equipment required to provide them according to federal law, because everything that is done with a special ed student, I sat in an IEP meeting this week, I listened to the 443 administration and the 613. I thought they did a magnificent job. I thought I was just blown away by the professionalism and the, and the way that that one child was, that child was the total focus of that meeting from every representative, and it was, I was privileged to be there. And so I just want to share with us at 443, and I sat down when Mr. Scheck was hired, with he and Dr. Dirksen, and the district is, got some decisions to make. And special ed is not going to go away. The federal requirements are not going to go away. We are looking at a budget process going on in the state that is, in my opinion, basically ignoring those needs. And in one of my angry moments in the board meeting, I don't get angry that often, here's the difference between general ed and sped. Generally, they want, everybody wants their children to go through, learn what they got to go through, and then go on with their life. With special education, we're like their last hope. We're family's last hope that their child can grow up with skills, with an education where they can live their life. And so I just want you to know, one thing I want you to know is that the staff of sped is peddling for all they're worth, but we've got some big issues that are going to have to be addressed. And the administration in 443 is aware of that, and I just wanted to get this out in public, that we have issues, they're affecting us, and if we don't come to some agreement with the interlocal, it's going to get worse. And so we're, like I say, it's 1,400 students, we have 1,000 of them, and we have the same vote as the other schools. So that's where we are. We have, up until about the last three years, I was very proud of the work we were doing, and I'm still proud of the work we're doing. What I'm not proud of is the direction. And so I just kind of wanted to share my heart in where my concerns, and 443 is going to have to make some hard decisions. 20 years ago, Allen Cunningham tried to get out of the interlocal. The courts wouldn't let us. We faced that same hurdle. So that's where we are with special ed right now. But I want to thank the staff of 613 because they are working under some tough conditions right now.
Thanks for that, Jeff. I think Mr. Scheck might want to say something, or you?
I just want to commend Jeff as well because it has not been simple. There's nothing easy about what we have went through over the last couple of months. However, as hard as it might be, we'll get through it. We will figure out a way, we will do what's best for the students of our district, and will do what's best for the students of our district, and it may mean that we have to make some of those difficult decisions. And I can assure everyone in USD four-four-three, because that's the only people I can speak for, that we are looking at every avenue. I have looked at the cooperative option. I have had conversations with the other superintendents of the interlocal about the cooperative option. I have some serious concerns about that option right now as well, for, for different reasons. And so we can have a, a much deeper discussion as we move forward with some of those things. But, you know, it, there's, there's nothing easy about a lot of things that we do in education or in life in general, but we still get up the next day and we move on and make the decisions for the reasons we do, and that's the, the children sitting in those rooms. And so we will continue to do that. You have, the, the, the team that we have out here is committed to that. I can assure you, we will continue to look at every, every possible avenue for the students of USD four-four-three and make sure that in, in the long term, we can do what's best overall. I, I will say, we, we, as hard as it's been, and I know the, the negotiations piece of this is really becoming difficult from that perspective, but we also did make some positive, there was some positive moves and some gains over the last couple of months, and there was some increased assessment values that we were able to get to, to really start putting some money where it mattered in certain perspectives. And I really feel like we can continue to have a voice in that. And, and I feel privileged to be a part of those conversations and be able to support that board from the superintendent perspective, to make sure that we're all pulling in the same direction, or at least have those conversations behind the scenes that I need to have to try to convince people as to why this matters. In short, in one conversation, I, I literally said, we can either pay for it appropriately now and provide the services that we need to for our students, and give them that hope and their families that hope, or we can pay for it when they sue us. It's really not that difficult a decision. And so we, we will continue to have those difficult conversations, and we will continue to try to push for what's best for that interlocal as a whole. And if we get to the point where we believe that's not what's best anymore, then we will do what we need to do.
Well, Jeff, I know that I speak for this board as a whole, that we truly appreciate all the time and passion and, and energy that you've put to that board to lead that board. So, thank you.
Jamie assures me she's ready to jump right in.
Can't wait till January.
I'm sat on that one board, and I'm side texting what is going on.
Maybe you can get Jeff to, to be your, like, sit behind you and whisper in your ear. Yeah. All right. We have, Tammy, you're scheduled to look at bills before the next board meeting. We have, as far as announcements, October sixteenth, no school K-12 for staff development day. October seventeenth, K-12 no school, teacher workday, staff development day. Then October twenty-seventh, Board of Education luncheon meeting. We are going to make the change, noon meeting, the second board meeting, at noon, we'll, we'll just continue to be here in the boardroom instead of in the, in the different schools. So we'll start that at the end of this month. So that twenty-seventh meeting will be here in the boardroom. And then Mr. Scheck has a few things he'd like to add.
And I will mention, and I think Erin, did Erin send you calendar invites on all the board meetings earlier this year? She will update those with that second one to move it back here for you. So just expect that to start tomorrow morning, from that perspective. And then just a couple more things from my perspective. If you didn't know, it's hatchet week. So hopefully, we can all get geared up for a big game against the Garden City Buffaloes on Friday night, and continue to hold the hatchets in our high school in the cases where they currently reside. It is, upcoming is National School Bus Safety Week, October twentieth, or, yeah, October twentieth through the twenty-fourth. So we will be highlighting our transportation department. You heard Tara mention the great things that those individuals do, transporting thousands of kids on a daily basis and keeping them safe like they do. So we will be putting out some information as that becomes nearer. I'm actually, next week, Diana from Transportation is going to join me at the radio show and kind of share a little bit from her perspective. I've really enjoyed taking the different team members to the radio show. If you ever get a chance on ninety-six-three on Thursday morning at around eight oh-five, eight-ten is USD four-four-three highlight time for the week. And so I've really enjoyed being able to take different team members from the district there and letting them share from their perspective the great things that are going on. Last week, we had Sergeant Nichols from the Air Force JRO TC program, and he did a phenomenal job highlighting that program last Thursday on the air. We've also had some conversation about expanding that over into some of the other stations as we continue to progress with some of that. And then my ultimate goal is to get students to come with me to highlight some of those things that they're involved in. I'm thinking currently about the teacher cadets and some of those things that we have going on, because it's always most meaningful when it comes straight from those students who are involved in those things. And so those are some of the things that I look forward to. And then finally, ironically, Jeff kind of mentioned this already, and it is National Principals' Month. October is a month to highlight the great individuals that we have leading our buildings. Something that I put together two weeks ago when I was on the radio in highlighting them, is I just sat and tried to put in words what we ask principals to do on a daily basis. And something that I shared on the radio show and then shared with them later in admin council that day, is in short, effective principals are instructional leaders, culture builders, talent developers, crisis managers, community liaisons, and visionaries, all rolled into one. So back to what Jeff said earlier, thank you, thank you, thank you, building principals, because you are the, the middle ground where everything comes together, and you have to constantly try to balance what you're hearing from us as a board and district leadership, and how you roll that out in what's best for the staff and students on your campuses. We appreciate you greatly. And with that being said, I will turn it back to you. I guess one last highlight for some of them, maybe not for some of them. As part of Principals' Month, we had a little fun with it, and Matt, Amy, and I decided to give away the opportunity for some of them to have the day off and for us to come in and take over their buildings or their, their spot in their buildings. So far, I have two of my four scheduled. I will be at Dodge City High School on October twenty-seventh, taking over for Tavi Lowry in her new position, which, thank goodness for me, it's basically the position I did about six years ago, or seven years ago, however long that's been. And then I have one scheduled over at Ross. I am taking over for Sarah Thomas on October twenty-eighth. From my perspective, I am really looking forward to this time at the elementary levels, especially because, as I've mentioned before, my entire career is pretty much in the secondary world. So it's been a real learning curve, or my biggest learning curve is in the elementary world, and I spent a lot of time with Amy Loder, just quizzing her and asking her an enormous amount of questions to get that perspective. So I'm really looking forward to getting out there and spending a day in those buildings. And then we will probably try to repeat something like this as the year goes on as well. So.
That's great. All right, board members, I know you'll be disappointed, but there's no executive session. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tammy, second by Jamie, all in favor.